This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. This is going to be a very unusual meeting this morning, this afternoon, this evening, and there will be some mistakes made, but I hope we can get through this in a reasonable way and make sure everybody has all their information. First, I would like to make a statement that all officials will be able to speak through the chair and then, and please identify themselves. All non-officials, please refrain from making any, any statements. We will vote by votes, a voice, a voice, voice vote. I will call each council member, name by name. You will vote yea, nay, or abstain. So let's, let's move on. Okay, okay. So I can call this meeting to order. I will, for all of us, say the pledge, pledge of allegiance, and it is an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Su King? Then, I guess I will do it. Jonathan Ramsey, say aye.
Aye.
Anthony DeBona?
Aye.
Case Duplessis?
Aye.
Tom Nguyen, aye. Kathleen Ramos?
Aye.
Mary Ann Rosa? Mary Ann Rosa? Where'd she go?
She's gone.
Her, hers is on mute.
Oh, she's on mute. How do we get her off?
Wait.
There he is on. Mary Ann Rosa? She's on mute. How do we get her off? Huh? Mary Ann Rosa? Mary Ann Rosa?
Up at the top.
She's gonna have to, I did it twice. Mary Ann? Yeah, she's there, but she's not hearing anything. Mary Ann?
Hit the yellow.
On me?
Orange button.
I can't see. Where? She's muted. This one here? Mary Ann? Let me, this way. Do I check this off?
Yep.
Or no? Mary Ann? Mary Ann Rosa? Okay. Lou Raza?
Yes, here.
Rachel Ryan?
Here.
And Paul Rinaldi will not be with us this evening. Okay. Can, I have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of March 16th, 2020.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for the March 16th, 2020 regular meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
Any changes or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Abstain. Abstained. Okay.
Mary Ann, can you hit now?
Mary Ann, you're here. Nope, Mary Ann's microphone is, is not, not working. Okay. Chairman's, uh, correspondence, how the first correspondence, there was, there was none at this time. And Chairman's report. I'm gonna make a statement. Where does I find it? Okay. Okay, everyone, good evening. This is Tom Nguyen, the town, chairman of the town council. Before we begin, I would like to say that the next few months will be difficult, a difficult time for everyone, and the town council is well aware of the task before us and does take this responsibility, does not take this responsibility lightly. We will make every effort to put together and, and propose a responsible budget that is the best, that is in best interest for, for the town. We will be following the guidelines the governor has put forward, and you will be hearing tonight, the town council will propose a zero increase in the mill rate. As, as the council moves forward in this difficult time, we will ensure we have a budget that will give us the confidence that our town will be prepared for the coming fiscal year. Subcommittee's report, I'd like to forego those, those reports and go right into the, right into the town manager's report. Mr. John Gavallas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There we go.
Good evening. This is interim town manager, John Gavallas. Let me begin by saying since our last council meeting, our world has changed. Rapidly spread coronavirus has upended our lives. Many in this community have lost their jobs. Our business owners are suffering financially, and 54 of our residents have tested positive for COVID-19. Three have died. As a result of this pandemic, I have taken steps to reschedule, reassign, and place many employees on limited duty in order to keep them and the public safe. All of our town employees are striving to provide the highest level of service possible to our residents under these difficult circumstances. Our police and fire departments are adequately staffed and appropriately supplied with the necessary personal protective equipment and are responding to all calls for service. Our police officers had to be tested after being exposed to COVID-19 infected individuals. I am happy to report, they all tested negative and they are all back to work. In terms of finance, it would be premature for me to speculate on the overall financial impact COVID-19 will have on our current operating budget. However, do not anticipate the cost to be unmanageable. While keeping accurate records of expenses related to COVID-19 response, at the appropriate time, we will fill out the necessary paperwork to obtain reimbursement from FEMA. In addition, I signed an MOU between United Way of Greater Waterbury and the Town of Watertown, allowing us to identify households in need in Watertown as a result of the Corona pandemic. Our social services department will be working with the United Way to identify eligible families. Those qualifying receive a $200 stipend from the United Way. On another note, our public works, planning and zoning, buildings, and park and rec departments have all moved into the newly renovated Hemon Way Municipal Center. We have tentatively scheduled the town hall offices of the town clerk, tax collector, and the assessor to move in early May. I am still limiting access to our buildings as a result of COVID-19. I will revisit that decision prior to May 20th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gavallas. Now, we're gonna move on to the, to the motions, and I will turn this meeting over to our chairman of finance, Rose, Mary Ann Rosa, and she's not there.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there, yes.
Yes.
Hi, Mary Ann.
I moved to a different computer, so hopefully.
We still have her on the phone.
Okay.
Each town department and the Board of Ed have presented their proposed budgets for 2021 to the council. And council members have had the opportunity to review them, and normally this would be the meeting. Each council member made recommendations to the various budgets. But given the situation that we currently have and our desire to have a zero mill increase, I've asked the finance director and the acting town manager to make recommendations to us on our priorities, best go forward, and potential might make. So there are no recommendations by us this evening for specific cuts to various departments or any specific numbers until all that work is accomplished. I assume from what the chairman said that we will have all that information for the May 26th period.
We're gonna move on to motions, Mary Ann?
Okay.
New business, Kathleen's gonna make the motions.
Okay.
I move to authorize the resolution regarding the deferment program pursuant to Governor Lamont's executive orders 2020, 7S and 7W.
Second. Mary Ann is seconding the motion.
Any discussion?
Can we just, for the record, have a very brief explanation of what that is?
That is a, well, Sue, can you explain that? Is upon about the taxes and the deferred taxes on cars?
I see that Paul Jessel is on, and he may be the one you want to talk to right now.
Paul, you on?
He worked very closely with Carla Hamel, our tax collector, to get this all up and running.
Yeah, I'm here, Tom. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Go ahead.
So, so the governor's executive orders required each town to adopt one or both of two different programs. The tax collector, working very closely with the town manager and the finance director, as well as myself, determined that the deferment program was the better program, the one that was more capable of being monitored and offered the best, um, all around advantage to the citizens as well as to the town. The other program was a interest rate reduction for a 90-day period. That was gonna be quite a bit more difficult to monitor and to, to engage in tax collecting. So the deferment program, the deferment program itself simply provides that it's not really a deferment of the taxes, what it is, is an extension of the period during which you can delay paying your taxes without incurring penalties or interest. And in this case, the July 1st tax bill could be deferred until October 1st. Just to complete the picture, this program also applies to our water and sewer department. Now, they issue bills every single month. So their bills for April 1, May 1, June 1, and July 1 will each be deferred and be due 90 days later than their original due date under the same terms, which means that you simply can pay them later without incurring penalties or interest if you do not by the delayed date. So in other words, if you don't pay your taxes by October 1, you will be charged interest back to the original July 1 due date.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I wanna do this. I am so, I am so used to doing that. Pardon me?
Rachel Ryan has a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just wondering how will that last piece be communicated to the taxpayers that they will owe the full interest going back to July?
It's, it's included both in a notice that will be going into the newspaper and it will be on our website. There's one other, there's one other thing that I do want to include, and I, and I failed to mention. This program will be open to all taxpayers without making an application except landlords. There are specific provisions for landlords, we are making those known, both again on the town's website and in a, what will be a published notice. They have to go through an application process, and there are certain things that they have to show in order to get the deferment. The other thing is, anyone whose taxes are escrowed by their bank, the bank will continue to pay. So that's where our money will come for the July 1 to October 1 period.
Mr. Chair?
Let me, go ahead.
May I ask one more question? This is Rachel Ryan. Just one other question about when they, the bills come in the mail, at least certainly for the, like, the auto bills, will those still say July 1st, and will there be any information on those bills printed about this, or will they only be able to get the information from the website and the newspaper notice?
Carla, Carla has that answer.
All right, so we're gonna mail out the bills, the due date is still July 1. Instead of saying, after 30 days, you're gonna be assessed interest, it's gonna say after October 1. So they're gonna see that there's a three-month period. Our software vendor is currently working on an insert to go into our tax bills, which will be questions, frequently asked questions to help explain the program. The landlords are gonna be the one that we may not know when we send out the bills if they're gonna be deferred, because they have until July 1st to make application. So from today, well, from April 1, which is in the past, but from today forward until July 1, landlords, and I believe there's about 440 landlords in Watertown between residential and commercial, they will have to make an application to me and then provide some documentation that was highlighted by this OPM, which is the Office of Policy and Management. So based on their criteria, we'll determine if they're available to get that benefit, but they may not see any information on the tax bill as if they were deferred or not because of the time in which they have to apply. Does that help?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'll put a chair, Lou Raza. When will these bills be mailed out?
They usually get mailed the last week of June. I haven't decided if I might mail them out a little bit earlier. It all depends on how overwhelmed the software vendor is, because it's such an unusual circumstance, but they'll be mailed before, you know, we always mail in the last three or four days of June, because technically I can't collect until July 1 on them. You know, without a rate bill and a tax warrant, usually don't collect until July 1. If I mail in the middle of June, people will be knocking on the door on June 16th. So I tend to wait, but it all depends on how everything falls into place, but they'll be definitely at their door by July 1.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna play, I'm gonna respond to a roll call. Jonathan Ramsey? Please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain.
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Nguyen, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Mary Ann Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Raza?
Yea.
Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Thank you. Okay, next motion, B.
I move to authorize the resolution pertaining to a modified calendar for the fiscal year 2020, 21, general and capital fund budgets as authorized by Governor Lamont's executive orders 2020-7B, 7C, and 7, is it 1 or I?
It's 7I.
Oh, I.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we get a summary on that as well?
Paul or Carla?
So, let me just go quickly through the three, three executive orders. Executive Order 7B really relates to open meetings, and it discusses how meetings have to be held, and the, the resolution does provide for a public hearing, because we do require a public hearing. They're still trying to make sure that appropriate citizen input is available on the budgets. 7C and 7I relate to orders that were imposed by the governor requiring the legislative body to authorize the budget-making authority, which in Watertown's case is both the town council, you are both the legislative body as well as the budget-making authority to establish the budget, to have a public hearing, establish the budget, set the mill rate without resorting to our normal process of having a referendum. The, the, as a result of COVID-19, the governor is of the opinion that having people gathered together for a referendum is problematic, and therefore he's doing away with this. This system is not voluntary, it's mandatory, and it was done that way specifically so that there wouldn't be questions about why we're doing it this way.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, Jonathan Rand, please, Jonathan Ramsey, please respond, aye, no, or abstain?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Nguyen, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Mary Ann Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Raza?
Yea.
Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Thank you. Okay, C, next, next motion, please, Kathleen?
I move to send to public hearing the following fiscal year 2020-2021 budgets. A, Town General Fund, 31,000, 31,91,105. B, School General Fund, 46,841,590. General Fund total, 77,932,695. C, Town Road Aid, 349,699. D, Water Operations, 1,876,296. E, Water Capital, 205,077. F, Sewer Operations, 1,876,296. G, Sewer Capital, 96,000. H, Water and Sewer Department, or Water and Sewer Debt, 82,798. I, Crest Brook Golf Operations, 624,204. J, Local Capital Improvements, 154,586. K, Debt Service Fund, 698,376. All of this would represent a zero mill rate increase.
I was saying.
Through the chair, Tom?
Pardon me?
Excuse me, Case Duplessis.
Wait a minute, Case. Wait a minute, Case. Case, hold on a second, I, I need a second first.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, okay, just grab a second. Who would that be?
Mary Ann.
Okay, okay, Case.
I'm sorry, Case Duplessis. Kathleen, could you repeat the Town Road Aid figure for me?
Town Road Aid is 349,699.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments or discussion or questions?
Through the chair. Could someone help explain how the current numbers will get us to a zero-mill increase?
Well, part of it will be used, will be taken out of the general fund, if that's what you're asking, Jonathan?
Part of it.
Yeah, the general fund, and then, uh, the, the taxes that we, that we receive from the taxpayer. Sue Zappone, do you want to walk through that for us in a general way?
Sure thing, yes, I, um, I gave some suggestions to the council on cuts that the town could make. We haven't narrowed them down to an exact, but we are gonna be making those cuts with additional revenue, and as Tom said, money from the fund balance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. Anthony DeBona?
Anthony.
Do, do we have, so is, is to get to arrive at a zero-mill increase, are we taking all out of the general fund, or do we have cuts to the town and the Board of Ed and the general fund to achieve that?
At this point, I have made suggestions for the cuts for the town, yes. Case Duplessis here. What about the Board of Ed?
We're gonna, you know, this, I'm trying to get this budget through to the, the next process, and there'll be plenty of time, and there'll be a lot more information about this budget and how we're gonna get there on the town, in the, in the town, town meeting on May 26th. I think it's premature right now to go over all, all the specific numbers, because right now they're pretty fluid, and if we can wait till that time, and then on top of that, the May 26th meeting, there will be, there'll be room for public participation, and, and our public can ask the questions also. So I'd like to be able to just move this forward, because it is, this is a proposed budget, it is not the budget, and if we can do that and wait to all these other questions, so Sue will have, Sue Zappone will have a lot more information for us and be able to, to talk about the, the specific cuts and where we're cutting, I think it'll be more informative to the town and the taxpayer, and they will indeed also have the, will, will have the opportunity to ask questions. Is there, is there any, anybody that has a problem with that?
Through the chair, Rachel Ryan. The, the motion says to move to set the budget to be sent to the public hearing, it doesn't say it's a proposed budget, so I guess I'm a little bit confused. I mean, this is obviously my first time going through this, and this is an unusual circumstance, but are we putting the cart before the horse in this? Are we just setting a number and then trying to figure out how to get there?
Well, it says, well, it says to move, to set the budget to be sent to the public hearing as follows. Now, the public hearing, as always, we've always done this, this, once the republic, the public hearing is, is set, and we're at the public hearing, there will be plenty of time for council members to discuss the budget, there'll be plenty of time for the public to ask questions, and anytime we, anytime at the public hearing, a council member can make a motion to change any, any of the, the language in the budget, so they can make a motion to decrease or increase any kind of, any kind of spending in any one of the line items, and we, and that's where we, that's where we discuss it. So this is indeed a, a fluid-moving budget right now, it always has been, and that's why we're sending it for a hearing, not for a vote, it's a hearing for the budget.
Through the chair. May I ask one more question? Are, are we gonna have a chance then, before a public hearing, to speak to the chair of the Board of Education and ask her questions directly?
We have another meeting on the 4th, and I believe on the 18th, town council meeting, and I will provide, I will ask the, the chair, and you will have the ability to go through the Board of Education budget, and I'll ask the chair of the, of the Board of Education, and, and possibly the superintendent to be there and ask questions.
Oh, that's, that's great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Through the chair, Case Duplessis?
Case, yeah.
Yes, can I, can we, can I assume we don't know as of yet for May, what is it, May 26th or May 29th? I'm not sure which, what the date is of this public, 26th, of the public hearing, how it's going to be held?
Same way, it's being held right now.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll be, it'll be tweaked better, but as far as right now, at this point, this is the way the, that we have to do it according to the directive of our governor.
Fine, thank you.
Okay.
One, one quick one, Anthony DeBona. So as Catherine stated, this, these numbers, this budget is with a zero-mill increase, or is this the one that the town manager recommended?
This is, um, this is the, this is the town manager. this is the, this is the town manager's budget that he recommended, and we're putting it forward to the, to the board right now. I'm sorry, to the council. And it will, like I said, it'll be, it'll be discussed and with possible changes. That depends on the council's motions, and those motions being passed on May 26.
Okay. Chair, Jonathan Ramsey. Anthony, these numbers here are slightly lower than what's in the budget booklet, but as Tom would say, the, at our final meeting with the public hearing, we'll have an opportunity to discuss that further and make any, any desired changes at that point.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Now, you got to do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still doing that. We'll do a roll call. Jonathan Ramsey? Aye, yea or nay, abstain?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn? Okay, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Motion passes. Next, next motion, Kathleen.
I move to set the budget public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Budget to be held on May 26, 2020 at 7:00 PM. In the Swift Middle School auditorium as appropriate, otherwise virtually while providing adequate time for public comment via email or mail. All information will be included on the town's website and in the public hearing notice.
Have a second.
Marian Rosa?
Any discussion? Hearing none. Be a roll call vote. Someone say, Jonathan Ramsey?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
I actually have just a quick question. Obviously, we're able to do this virtually. Is that right? I mean, we're able to have, that's, I guess that's a question for our attorney. I would think so. Obviously, we wouldn't be wanting to vote on this if we couldn't, but it's just a little different, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we'll be okay to do that.
As far as public participation?
Yeah, public participation.
Any changes? Paul?
This is Paul Jessel. Yeah. Executive Order 7B speaks to that specifically. And with regard to public hearing, one of the things is, they want to make an email address available so that questions can be emailed in advance of the meeting. But it's also important that there be some opportunity for simultaneous questions. Some places are doing it using the chat.
Paul? People were talking about the ability to have this meeting and to vote on the budget.
Yep, so, again, so again, it's necessary that people be allowed to email questions in before the meeting, but there also, as I was saying, has to be some opportunity for simultaneous questions, which again, could be done through the chat thing where they could type in their questions. Then each question would need to be read for the record and responded to.
Anthony, you okay with that? What, Case Duplessis, I believe. Case, yea, nay?
Oh, yea.
Yeah, Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Thank you. All right, next motion, Kathleen.
I move to approve an extension of time for the Charter Revision Commission to submit a draft report to the Town Council to May 29, 2020.
Have a second?
Second.
Any, any?
Case Duplessis, second.
Yeah, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by, Jonathan Ramsey?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Okay, next motion, C, Kathleen.
I move to approve the resolution appointed to the Auditor King and King to conduct the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 audit.
Have a second?
Second by Marian Rosa.
Okay, any discussion?
Through the Chair. I just want to confirm, is this the same accounting firm that we currently have for the last couple of years?
Sue?
Yes, they've done it for three years now. This will be their fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions? None? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. With Jonathan Ramsey?
Aye.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Thanks. G, Kathleen?
I move to approve the modifications of the job description of the building official and set a salary adjustment to be $38.736 per hour.
Have a second?
Second by Marian Rosa.
Any discussion? Questions?
Quick question. Yes, Anthony DeBona. Is this, is this an increase for that building official from where he was until now?
Yes, he was the, he was the assistant building official, moved up to the building inspector. So, he is, he's been, he's been promoted, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Is that, does that answer your question, Anthony?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Jonathan Ramsey, in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Thank you. Kathleen, next?
I move to approve the job description for Administrator for Land Use and Building Services/Zoning Officer and set a salary adjustment to $50.23 per hour.
Second by Marian Rosa.
Any, any discussion?
Case Duplessis through the Chair. Is this a new, is this a new, new person, a new position?
No, this is a, this is a person that's already, has already, is already in our employ, and he is, he's going to be, he's going to have an additional, additional responsibility.
Oh, okay.
And that's what the reason is for. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor, Jonathan Ramsey, I'm doing it every time. Jonathan Ramsey, say yea or nay?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Kathleen, next?
I move, I move to approve allocating additional funds in the amount of $6,459 for the clerk of the works for the Hemingway renovation project.
Have a second?
Case Duplessis, second?
Any discussion? Questions?
Case Duplessis, answer.
Case.
Can you tell me, is this through the end of June or through the end of July? Or how long is this?
I believe the end of May. Is that right?
Yes, correct. That brings us through to the end of May.
End of May.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Through the Chair, Lou Razza. Is this the last?
No.
Last time we're going to do this?
I certainly hope so. We are, we are in phase two right now, waiting to move the, more offices into the, into the building. We are running a little bit behind, but we already have phase one done, and the contractors are finishing up the offices that we're going to have to move into, and I believe that would be the Town Hall. Is that correct? Sue, or? I believe the Town Hall is going to be moved in.
The Town Hall will go next, and then the annex will be after that.
And then the Board of Education. So, we're, so we're at two.
So, this will be good till the end of May?
This will be good till the end of May. Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Hearing none. Jonathan Ramsey, yea or nay?
Yea.
Anthony DeBona?
Yea.
Case Duplessis?
Yea.
Tom Wynn, yea. Kathleen Ramos?
Yea.
Marian Rosa?
Yea.
Lou Razza?
Yea.
And Rachel Ryan?
Yea.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so, we're done. Can I motion adjourn?
I move on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a voice vote. Okay, thank you very much. Meeting is over, and we'll try this again. And then, I guess, May 4 is our next Town Council meeting, and we'll do that again. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
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 Bye, Paul.